It is six thirty P M. Monday, August twenty second, two thousand and twenty-two. I call the order this meeting of the Burnsville Planning Commission. Tonight's planning commission meeting is being held in person and virtually via Zoom. As Chair, we leave the planning commission meeting and public is welcome to participate when called upon throughout the meeting. Members of the public may attend the meeting in person, or you can join via online Zoom. Additional instructions on how to participate are posted online at Burnsville MN dot gov on the public meeting calendar. As usual, tonight's meeting is available for viewing on B C T V and on the website. If you are unable to participate this evening and would like to submit public testimony, I encourage you to email your comments to city staff or mail them directly to City Hall. You may also participate on the meeting tonight online by going to zoom dot U S slash join. If you are unable to participate, oh, excuse me, I'm reading this. In meeting, type in meeting ID eight two one seven zero one seven seven five three zero. Once you're logged on to the meeting, please use the chat feature to tell a moderator which item you wish to speak to. If attendees experience audio problems, we suggest you leave the meeting and then rejoin. This usually fixes the issue. You may also join the meeting by calling us at six five one three seven two eight two nine nine. Meeting ID again is eight two one seven zero one seven seven five three zero. Please, public hearing, I will open up a time for callers can speak to the item and we'll give more instructions when we get to that point. Your call will be muted until then. Please note there might be a slight delay due to the differences in technology. Again, all this information and more, including tonight's agenda and our background information, can be found on the city's website, Burnsville MN dot gov, under the public meeting calendar. With that, let's turn to the agenda. Any changes to our agenda tonight, commissioners? Seeing none. Staff?
I have no changes from staff.
No changes from staff. I look for a motion. Commissioner Wad?
I move we approve the agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Wad, do I have a second? Mr. Brad, second by Mr. Braddock. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that is unanimous. We had a meeting on Tuesday, or Monday, August the eighth, and all our meeting minutes were in your background. Any changes to the minutes, commissioners? Seeing none, I'll change staff.
No changes.
No changes from staff. Do I have a motion? Mr. Braddock?
I have a motion.
Motion by Mr. Braddock. Have a second. Mr. Wallace?
I'll say.
Second by Mr. Wallace. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone who opposes may say nay.
Oh, it's not here.
Oh, abstaining. Got it. That was three nothing with Commissioner Wad abstaining. And then we move on to our public hearing for tonight. We have an application of Ivy Brook Parking LLC for rezoning from G I M dash G W, our Gateway Industrial Medium, to G I M dash G W slash P U D. Gateway Industrial Medium Plan Unit Development, preliminary and final plant of a one lot subdivision to be known as Ivy Brook Parking Northeast, concept and development stage plan unit development, and interim use permit for a period of twenty-five years for an outdoor storage for commercial vehicles and truck trailers, and a floodplain conditional use permit for brading work in the floodplain of the Minnesota River for parking lot and curb gutter improvements at the property located at twelve oh twenty Interstate thirty-five W West. Here to present is our city planner, Sarah Madden. Ms. Madden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, land commissioners. So as mentioned, the application that we have before you this evening, there are a number of land use clearances that are included in it as a whole. But as the actual proposed use of the property would be for an outdoor storage facility for parking trailer trucks or commercial vehicles, similar to some of the other applications you see earlier this year. So the subject site we'll be talking about this evening is Jason two Interstate thirty-five W. It is the site maybe familiar to you as the former Volkswagen dealership. So this has been vacant for a number of years since the building was zoned. So it is in our G I M, which is our Gateway Industrial Medium zoning district, and within the Gateway District overlay as a whole within the zoning ordinance. The property is also guided as part of the Minnesota River Quadrant in our comprehensive plan. The site itself is three point two acres and does currently consist of three individual parcels. This is the state that it was in when it was formerly a dealership. And as part of this application, it will be planted into one lot of record. So shown here is the flat of the property. It is staying the same in size. We do have kind of a Embassy Road easement that is existing and will continue to be part of the property moving forward. There is access onto this Embassy Road at a frontage road along Interstate thirty-five W. This is, exists and moves to the south where it connects into Cliff Road in that area. Commonly used by Kramer mining materials. So shown here is the demolition plan for the site. As you were able to see in the aerial photo earlier, the pavements in disrepair, the applicant indicated that they'll be removing, kind of evidence the forebuilding had, removing some pavement and then rehabilitating it into the parking lot facility for the proposed use. So shown here is the paving dimensions plan for a site showing that there'll be ninety truck trailer stalls. Snow storage indicated on the plans generally around the perimeter on the west side of the property, or west side of the parking lot on the property. There is one access point into the property from the access road, from the frontage road. So there were formerly two, and that will be reduced, that's a benefit to the project. As a whole, the site plan is compliant with parking lot standards. So shown here is, actually, I'll go back. Just to look at this, you'll know that there's no building that's being constructed. I'll get to that in the deviations section later on in the presentation. But as part of the proposal from the applicant, they're proposing as is interim use in the underlying zoning district that they would not construct, not construct a building for the proposal. And so shown here is the origin control plan and the landscape plan. You can see seeding along the perimeter of the property and then landscaping along the perimeter. The site itself is generally located, not enclosed parks, but made in active uses or properties that have a lot of public visibility. So while it is fronting on Embassy Road that is primarily used as access for Kramer mining materials, which would be coordinated, you know, between the applicant. If you tried to drive by the site, as part of your site, as you might have noticed that there's a gate in place. So it's, as part of their application, the applicant is also requesting not to install a screening fence or full landscaping screening. So they do have the existing vegetation on the adjacent Kramer land to the northwest and the south, and then a concrete barrier on the east side where it would front Interstate thirty-five W. So with that staff supportive of the request to not install permanent screening through landscaping or fencing based on the site and situation of the property itself. Also included as part of this application is a conditional use permit for work within the floodplain as part of the floodway district of the Minnesota River. Any obstruction that is placed into the floodway does involve the flood, floodplain conditional use permit. So that is part of the land use clearances that they are under approval for tonight. They have provided a no rise certificate as part of their application, and there's no issues from a staff review related to their floodplain impacts. So since it's a planned unit development, as part of their request, they are asking for a number of deviations. You'll know that one is here in red. There was a correction made after the publishing of the staff report. It's a discussion between staff and the applicant to clarify what one of the conditions on the application meant. But before I get to that, so benefits to the project are that it would result in plating the entire site to combine those three parcels into one common lot of record. Benefit to rehabilitate the site into a new pavement. The subject site is vacant and overgrown for a number of years. This would be an upgrade to the site in the area. And that the site is redesigned to eliminate that access point on the frontage road. Deviations included in the planned unit development would be to allow the parking storage to not be screened. We are supportive of that. In previous outdoor store application, outdoor storage applications, the vehicles themselves are not able to be a hundred percent screened based on the height and the parked vehicle. So it is viewed a little bit differently, and in this case, just based on where the property is located, staff is comfortable with this deviation. To not require a principal building to be constructed for that interim use of outdoor storage lot, which is typically a requirement for any outdoor storage in this zoning district. In this case, staff is supportive of it based on the, again, the interim use of a parking facility as well as its location within the floodplain of the Minnesota River. So staff is supportive of that deviation as well. What there was some discussion on is the inclusion of parking lot islands. So while the staff is supportive of the request for twenty-five percent creative space as opposed to thirty percent, which would be the requirement for the Gateway Industrial Medium, the current plan that's in the background report does show that there's no internal parking lot landscaping. This zoning district does require eight percent of the internal area of parking to be landscaped. Based on how this has been viewed in other applications and the proximity to other zoning districts where the internal parking lot landscaping has reduced a number of three percent. While we're not supportive of the plan in place at zero percent and to not include any parking lot islands, we are supportive of a three percent, which we have discussed with the applicant. They have provided a preliminary plan that would show moving towards that requirement, but we haven't had time to review it before, before the meeting this evening. So other considerations, as mentioned, as part of their floodplain conditional use permit, information on no rise certificate was submitted, given that the project would not impact the regulatory floodplain elevation. And then the proposed use for this interim use permit is a twenty-five year term. Based on the site situation of the property, we feel that with the included conditions that we can be supportive of the application. So overall, staff is recommending approval of the number of applications there with the rezoning to planned unit development, the plant, the establishment of the planned unit development, the interim use permit, and the floodplain conditional use permit, subject to the condition that the outdoor storage area and parking facility is loaded to commercial vehicles and truck trailer vehicles, and not materials or other things that are allowed in other outdoor storage lots, and that the site plan should be revised to incorporate internal landscape areas and into row landscape islands to provide that minimum three percent. So with that, I think there are questions, and this is a public hearing this evening, and our applicant is in the audience as well to answer any questions if needed.
Sounds great. Thank you, Ms. Madden. Any questions for city staff commissioners? Commissioner Wad?
Yeah, thank you for a great presentation. The three percent parking island, what does that mean? Is that one island or is it two, or I'm just curious what?
So there's a couple of requirements within the zoning code related to that. So three percent of the internal parking area of that square footage would need to be landscaping island. So that's where that requirement comes in. There's also a zoning code requirement that in parking lots of a certain size, that the end of rows have a landscaping island or peninsula. So that's something that we can review as part of revisions when they come in for the building permit.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes, Ms. Madden. And I'll pay you back and say great presentation. Thank you. With that, however, with the new exit plan off thirty-five onto Cliff and the new roundabout going in, is there going to be any easements or anything that would be necessary on this property? Or is it far enough away that there will be no impacts?
So no easements would be necessary for this particular property. There may be, just due to the construction of the new interchange that's been discussed for Cliff Road thirty-five W, there may be routing during the construction phase. It would depend on the timing of when this would open, on what level of that impact is. But currently, this project is not part of where the new interchange would be located.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Wad?
What does no rise mean? No rise certificate?
Any given answer.
So this is, this project is in the floodway of Minnesota River, and when a project such as this comes in, why they have to prove that what work they're doing doesn't increase the flood elevations of that area. So a no rise certificate essentially is the calculations supporting that there is no rise in the elevations of the floodway.
Oh, they, so they're certifying that they're not building their property up to be above the flood?
Yeah. They've changed some elevations in there, but they've mitigated in other areas to offset that. So it's, because if they build up, then it makes flooding worse elsewhere.
Exactly.
I got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Madden, how close is this to the Kramer quarry?
So it is immediately adjacent to sites owned by the quarry. You can see some activity in kind of the southwest of the aerial photo. So on all sides, all of its neighbors that are not road is Kramer mining materials. Where there's active blasting is not, not in that immediate area, but they do have some approval in the surrounding areas of the parcel.
Okay, so I'm just, there's no cliff right there, I guess is what I'm asking.
Not my knowledge.
Okay. And then would, no, blasting, that's another, another good point because does that with the weight of the trucks, and maybe this is a good one for the engineer, again, same engineer, the way the trucks on that area, is there any concern there?
I, we'd have to look at an aerial. I think the pit's quite a ways away.
Yeah, the actual pit mine is further distance away. I don't know the exact grade as it moves up to it, but it's other distance.
And there isn't, they're not going to want to come closer to that. Obviously, they sound supportive of the requirements here.
They're aware of who the neighbor is, yes.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. With that, I would like to call up the applicant, since they came in. If you could just state your name and address for the record, of course.
Sure. Trevor Panai, one forty-one ninety-eight McKenna Road Northwest in Prior Lake, five five three seven two.
Welcome back, Mr. Panai.
Yeah, good evening, commissioners. Thanks for having me. So yeah, this site is similar to the ones, you know, that we got approved earlier this year as demand is still strong for truck trailers. I know we want to get them off the streets. You know, that's been a pretty big problem for Burnsville as well. So the two developments out going on right now, they're coming to completion and they're going, they went really well. They're complex and expensive, but they went really well. And I've been talking to the Luther, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
I've been talking to the Luther Auto Group for, you know, over a year on this site and, you know, came to agreements. And it's, again, it's a complex site. It's a little challenging with the floodplain and whatnot. So, you know, I guess, I guess my business model turned into transforming complex sites into truck to trailer lots. You know, but I think it helps everybody, right? It's obviously helps my business model, it helps the community, and helps the truckers, and helps the city turn, you know, transform abandoned properties into something that we can use.
Right, the one right up front on Menards there looks, looks like it's coming along pretty well, so.
Yeah, they striped it today.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're going to be doing the building siding soon. And I think once you put the fence, you know, some touch-up work, and we should be parking trucks there pretty soon.
Good deal.
Yeah.
Any questions for the applicants? Commissioners? Commissioner Wallace?
Since you alluded to, you know, your other properties that are coming along.
Yeah.
Do you have enough clientele to really, you know, utilize this site as well?
Yeah, plenty, yeah. So those sites are accounted for, and this site, it's already pretty much accounted for, right, in terms of spots and whatnot, you know. But there's a big pent of demand of, you know, it's not just Burnsville people living in, you know, neighboring cities who really need truck parking, and sometimes they end up parking the Burnsville streets because that's where they live, or that's where it's, you know, it's close to thirty-five W corridor. So, you know, it's, it's a pretty central location where it's, you know, it does pretty well. You know, it's just expensive again, but.
Thank you for that, and I mean, just a kudos to you turning some of these vacant lots that are even ice orders into, you know, productive, you know, business models.
Sure, sure. I appreciate that, yeah.
Yeah. All right, we appreciate you coming in today, and I appreciate your work here in Burnsville.
Thanks so much, yeah.
Thank you for choosing Burnsville.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. It is six forty-nine, so I'm going to open up said public hearing. If you are in the audience and like to speak on this issue, please come up to the lectern. Otherwise, if you are on Zoom, I don't believe there's anybody on Zoom, but there might be, we don't know. Anybody? Doesn't look like anybody's on Zoom. So with that, I'm going to close the public hearing at six fifty, and I'm going to turn back over to the commissioners for any discussion. We have to discuss something. We have to have a motion, something, somebody? Commissioner Wad?
Oh, yeah, nice project, and I'll, I'll make a, I'll make a motion.
Good deal.
So I recommend, I move that we recommend to the city council approval of the rezoning, preliminary and final plant, concept and development stage, planned unit development, interim use permit, and a floodplain conditional use permit subject to the two conditions listed.
We got a motion by Commissioner Wad? Commissioner Wallace?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Wallace. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. That is unanimous. That means it's going to be on the consent agenda for city council on Tuesday, August thirtieth at five thirty, right here at City Hall. Any further comments, Ms. Madden?
Yeah, I'll correct that. So that's actually, so it's Tuesday, September sixth.
Oh.
Is that not right?
I think so, yeah.
Oh, yeah, you're right, you're right, because the extra week.
Extra week, sorry.
Gotcha. Thank you for clarifying. And that is that. We move on to the next item on our agenda, and that is number four, updates. Any updates, commissioners? Okay, no updates, commissioners. I'm just going to allow Ms. Madden to get to her seat.
Stayed over there?
Any updates, staff?
So your next planning commission meeting is September the twelfth, and we do have at least one public hearing on schedule for that meeting. And then I do want to note, if you could stay just a couple of minutes afterwards, the city clerk's office has asked us to take a group photo. So I know we're missing members tonight, but this is, this is our group, so, and that's all I have.
We can always Photoshop them in later. With that, I think it is up to number five on our, on our agenda. Commissioner Wallace?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to retire for this evening.
A motion's been made to retire for the evening by Commissioner Wallace. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Braddock. Well, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. That is all we have for tonight. Have a great night, and thanks for joining us. And the motion passes unanimously. That is all we have for tonight. Have a great night, and thanks for joining us.